So we're good to go. All right, I approve motion to, very entertaining, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the by this agenda and present.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Was there anybody signed up? Or anybody on Zoom who wants to or said anything?
Uh, nope.
But the mind, all right, well then we'll jump right into real business. Uh, information items, basic ed requirements.
So these are our missing for information, we're required to provide it to the board each year for information. And it is around our minimum basic ed minutes requirements. We have a requirement for elementary students to have a minimum of a thousand hours per year of instruction. And secondary students can have a thousand, we, we exceed that thousand for the elementary, we exceed the ten eighty for the middle school and high school. But we use the overall average. So our students are getting those additional minutes. That's why sometimes in the past would be pets, no day or things like that were okay because. Those are to make up the day, but it's not an hours issue. So different information for the board, we do it every year.
Sean, she's unable to get the. The Zoom one. On the Zoom maybe there's, they just can't see us or some. Something like that.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing we have to do, we just have to know.
Just need to know. And thank, thank you.
Next on information items is the, you know what, Jason or at least Gina, one of you guys have any questions?
No, I didn't.
I did, I do not.
All right, then we will jump to mental health services. Diana, this one's got your name on it as well.
So this has been an important topic. Heather was, Heather Mark was funny on being here today, but she was unable to be here. She would have been working together for a bit. We, as I told you, shared the last time we had a large meeting with, you know, the hospital and some, you know, work leader. And trying to find ways to support our students with mental health. Uh, since that time, I've talked to several school districts, had a pretty long meeting, I have an idea with Richland. Um, Richland has committed a lot of their district funds. They did initially have some grant money, they still have some. But they have put money into social workers and nurses. Um, in their buildings, they now have six, sixteen nurses and five social workers in the district. When they used to have five nurses in the district. To help, uh, as we already, help and mental health needs of students. Uh, we are looking at grant opportunities. There was, there is a grant, the Santa grant, but it's, it's just such a tight timeline. And there is a big commitment for districts have to prove. Fund it when the grant runs out. And there wasn't a way for us to really prove that in here in the next, it's basically like a week or two weeks. Um, I've done some, in some of my research and working in other districts, there's, here's just one example of contracting with an outside agency. There's an agency called United Family Center that contracts with several of our schools. Um, the challenge with this one is the ninety four thousand dollars is for a bachelor's level, maybe psychology, it's not a therapist. It's not a social worker. Um, I got some mixed reviews from districts about how successful that was or wasn't. Um, one thing that really sparked my interest and I think I would love if we could perhaps commit some funding, I could possibly even. Come up with maybe half of this out of grant funding is there's a, a company called Hazel Health. Um, Richland, there's probably a few districts contracting with them. I, I put some information in here. What Hazel Health is, is they are, are a telehealth service. But they are kind of that stopgap for up to six months because it's really hard for students to get counseling outside of. Uh, immediately, it like doesn't happen. Um, so if we aren't able to provide it at school, they really can't get anything. This is immediacy. This is someone that they can communicate with regularly and have regular appointments. And they develop transition plans and help those students transition into a, a counselor for the long term. They do referral, they do short-term therapy, it's fifteen, Richland's paying fifteen bucks a kid. For us, I think that'd be about forty thousand dollars. And we would have immediate services and they actually do help and telehealth. Um, Richland has not extended into the health services, but they have a lot of nurses now, so it may not be as necessary. But I think this is something we should really look into. I think they're pretty popular because I've tried to reach them multiple times and have not heard of them yet. And you can only reach them like with a email contact form.
If you want to.
But I need, um, I need some commitment of some funds, if this is something we could try. I, I think it would be a really good opportunity to put something in place. Pretty easily, pretty quickly, that would help with our needs because it literally is the student came in in crisis. I worked with an elementary principal today who had a certain, had a crisis response that had was suicide. And, um, uh, anyway.
My wife works very closely with these.
Especially.
Very highly.
If she has a phone number contacting, she, that would be awesome. And I think that, um, this type of service is something that we could get something happening right away. Um, in talking to Richland, what they've done is they have made the commitment to, to put the money into the support services. And they're finding the most success with additional nurses and social workers. Uh, I, I think that would be a great path for us to look into. And for ninety seven thousand dollars, we could almost get our own social worker. And we wouldn't be, they would be able to do much more than a BA level, um, what kind of case manager, support person in the building. Um, but I need, you know, I need, I don't know if this is a study session conversation. We, we have to make some decisions about how we would fund some of these things and what kind of commitment we want to make. There's, there's definitely possible leads out there. Um, but it does talk about.
I see the reason why you can't have a discussion in the next, what kind of wish.
And I can have some more information and more options, some possible of social worker, where social worker is a. Would be a master's level person coming in, um, depending on the level of experience and benefits, obviously there would be a cause. Uh, but it is, the need is great and the cert options for them are.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do my investigation.
I'd like to see him come back, um, to the board and so in session with more information. Okay?
I think it sounds great. I personally know people that were trying to get kids and counseling and it was like. A very minimal, a two month wait and sometimes up to six.
And it, it often is, is at that length of time and usually once some, when something comes to one of our staff members. A lot of times it's already processed, like it's, it's well passed, I need to start some counseling because I'm having some struggles. So, um. I think that, uh. It would be great for us to think about that. I think it would be many well spent.
Thank you. What type of information would you like for us to include when we have that discussion?
Um, I'd like, um, more information on, on cost and service and, you know, what. Um, immediate, would be available usually when, um. Usually when, when the need arises that we see the need is emergency. These kids are at a place where, um, and their families are at a place where, uh, they can't wait. They need, they need some type of an immediate support and, um. And we need to be able to help provide for that immediate support to get them through this crisis. So they can get to that place where. Uh, they can survive that crisis and get them to the, you know, into a, a longer mental health, uh, program. And so, uh, cost, cost is going to be a big one for us and then, uh, more information so that we can. Build the best program we can with the funding that we have.
There's, so we, I know that I've sent this to the board before, the healthy use survey data. Um, really defines a need, uh, in this area. And so we know that coming out of the pandemic, that our kids are having, uh. Just some different emotional issues that we haven't seen before. Uh, so this is news, Diana said, we can, we can break some funding. And fund it through grant and some different things, but there will need to be a commitment. Uh, both, I, I think both pieces there, that Hazel Hall may or may not be a permanent fixture and solution. And then especially for the student, this is like stopgap counseling. That, um, you know, where we understand there's kind of a crisis or a huge need. Uh, but it's not meant to be a permanent solution for the student. Uh, but it does, it does provide us with resources.
Right.
Um, so we'll try and if there's any more thoughts about what information, I know that cost is a big one.
Right.
Or, you know, if you want to know about if there's other providers or hospitals can, can send some of that work. You can also look into that, you know, like, uh, the fact that Indiana worked with Heather, and Heather part of Cross Memorial.
Right.
Kind of says a lot that this is a product of those types of conversations. So, uh, yeah, we'll try and provide you with as much information as is needed. So you can make an informed decision about what we need for the district and what we need for the kids.
Right. We, we actually had discussion in our big meeting and we had, you know, Dr. Solers who was chief and, um. We, I mean, we had a lot of people there who had some, had influence over the situation. We actually talked about contracting across the, the hospital. But it involves, and that's still something that probably potentially could be on the table, but the. That they don't, they don't have a structure for that. Now, they're not like a, we have no mental health services, but there are mental health agencies, yeah, it's like the, they're mean, they're busy. And they aren't that, um, you know, they are that quite diversified and maybe in something down the road. And they are very aware that there is a need for more than they're able to handle. Um, Heather herself is several months out from people being able to see her and, um. The more that we can do here for kids, um.
Yeah, I, I don't think that. I don't think that we can do that long-term, we're not set up to do any type of long-term care. But it's that immediate. Crisis that, um. Uh, you know, how do we get them through that immediate crisis to, you know? Get them through those immediate first day or two crisis so that, you know, mom and family and, and that can develop a, a. A, uh, yeah, plan to help their child move safely and help. You know, as healthy as they can to where they need to be. Uh, we're, we're just not set up to get them all the way there, but just to help get that. It's kind of that stopgap, let's, let's help them get to that next piece.
And with our comprehensive therapists that we have, I mean. If it was consistent, we could do that, but it's still a limited number of cases, the family case manager, so many. But now we've been cut down so much, it's hard to count them out. So it's tough. Yeah.
Who knows to get your contact and.
And I was wondering if maybe my daughter has a contact too, like. Okay, okay, awesome. I didn't hear that they were working for me, but we, I don't, you know, the district, we talked to them. Great, okay. I will.
And I, there is, I'm not sure the whole scope of their work, but it's more than just.
If they have mental and, they do have mental and medical health, Richland had not. Used the medical health portion, because they have really seen that the mental health is what they're relying upon. But the medical health was kind of interesting too for a district with two nurses.
Jason, Lisa, any questions or comments?
I don't know if something that could be answered now or later in the work session, just how it would work, because students use their Chromebooks for the sessions or will they need to have their own tablet?
They do, they, we, they would just show their device, their school device, and they'd have a private space to meet with the counselor, whomever they're working with.
Great.
Good, Jason?
Yeah, no, I don't have anything additional. I'd be interested to see how, uh, what more information we can see, uh, at, at our next work session. I. I think it's important. I appreciate, uh, the work on this and moving it forward. So.
All right, thank you. Uh, if there's no other comments or concerns, we're going to jump into consent items. Uh, maintain a motion for a consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there? Good, Jason?
I said aye, did it not come through?
No, it did not. No, not well, we got it now. All right, so that runs us down to action items. First on the action items are vouchers and pay, it's just vouchers. Is this supposed to be vouchers payroll? Maintain a motion for vouchers.
Also.
A second, were there questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Uh. One is, it seems like the last couple of gen, um, voucher rolls, we've seen two separate general fund vouchers. Um, and I, that's new. I'm just kind of curious as why we're seeing two separate voucher forms.
That's for the control. So anything that we're paying in September, but it was actually incurred in August, um, were accrued back to the last fiscal year.
Okay.
Only see that at this time of, um, the fiscal year. Like at the fiscal year, and that's the only time you'll see an approval run. We might have one more next month, just because there was a couple that didn't partake that we need. Um, but after that, I won't get any until the date I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question, I just had one, uh, nine oh six, one oh four for food of our construction. Um, it looks like if I can get there fast enough. I was wondering if that's more of a capital projects expense or, or what? It says shop compound enclosure.
And this is for Paul and Jason, yeah, we, we enclose, we see key funds to enclose two sides of the shop compound. To provide additional protection for our metal storage and our wood storage.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That looks good too.
Are you good, Jason?
I'm good.
Alisa?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, you guys got any questions?
Great.
All right, all in favor of approving the vouchers, please say aye.
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 Okay, next is out of state travel for the boys' basketball.
I moved to approve out of state travel, uh, for boys' basketball.
All right.
Second.
Well, here we go.
Casey's here too, and she has a couple. I have, oh, good. I have, do you have questions? Okay. You kind of have to come up here though, they can't hear you on the microphone.
Okay.
Okay. Right in the hot seat, right there. The hot seat is, okay. Questions, questions, I did have a couple of questions and I, I sent it to you last night as a, as a text message, which you must have.
No, I got it. Oh, good, but then I responded today.
Well, I didn't get your response.
Oh, but that's okay. No, go ahead, let me get my, let me get my notes. Okay. I was wondering who it came from, because it didn't have a name. Oh, so I was like, hmm, who's the mystery person?
Casey probably doesn't have your numbers.
Came through my email though.
Oh, from, oh.
From like a phone number to my email. Oh, I sent it to you.
It like showed up in my email. Oh. Well, then. Yeah, okay. Um, so you had questions about, I just had them.
Okay, well, my question was. Um, the out of state travel request for the boys' basketball, can you explain the funding? I'm just going to read this all the way. Yes, go ahead. Is this booster club dollars or simply a part of your overall basketball budget for the year? Will it impact end of season needs for turn of play? And I am always supportive of extras for our kids as long as we don't cut ourselves short at the end of the season. And is it safe to assume this preseason play does not include cheer and those ex, additional costs? Or, and for supervision needs?
So I'll start with the last question, fresh off on my mind.
Okay.
Um, yes, it is safe to assume it does not include cheer or band, nobody's traveling. So it would be the coaches and bare bones, the players, so that it, as far as. This will all come out of the boys' basketball budget. So they, they fundraise, they have money in their account that they, they put on tournament, they do concessions, they have all their fundraisers.
Okay.
So they have their money, it comes directly out of their account. It will not come from boosters or anybody else, it comes from them. And then. Um, it, it doesn't really impact the postseason, postseason needs because, I mean, it will, it affects their budget. But they have a couple fundraisers planned, they're going to come to the tournament, they have concessions lined up in a couple of weeks, so they should have more than. Yeah, yeah. Um, there was one new, um, issue that got brought to light yesterday, a scheduling issue, um. That I found yesterday that we're working through. It is scheduled on a weekend where there were two league games scheduled. That I didn't, that we just put the pieces together yesterday. So we're working through. Seeing if we can get those, working with athletic directors and the other leagues or other districts to see if they're willing to. Reschedule those league, or those just league meets or league games. So there's that little conflict that we're working through. And everybody's, I mean, it's a great opportunity for our kids. And if they have the money to support that, you know, choice that they're making with their money, um. We do need to get that scheduling conflict ironed down though. And that's a, a lot of moving parts there.
Okay.
There, there, there probably will be a change to their transportation though.
Oh, yes. Um, they probably will, they will not be taking the suburban, the converged, all the. Three items that were in there, they're going to actually probably be taking a bus. It's more economical and stuff, what they will be taking.
So, uh, transportation will provide the driver.
Yeah, they'll, will, they'll, yeah.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions. Thank you. And again, I do support that. I think that's a great opportunity.
No, I think those are questions.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for the, the kids to be able, to get invited to some of these actual tournaments.
It is, it's a great opportunity. And if we can get the scheduling to work out, that would be great. And if the scheduling doesn't work out, then. You know, we tried, we gave our best effort. We're working really hard with a lot of different people, we try to, lots of people, so.
May I have a, a nice question? If we have to move the dates for that, we have to come back to the board for people again, if the dates shift at the location, or is it kind of.
The dates won't change for the turn, for this motor center. And what it is, it's a, a game in the motor center on Saturday. And then since they were already making the trip over to that area, then they were able to get us another game scheduled for that Friday night. So they're getting two games on the trip to kind of maximize their playing. And so the, this trip will not change dates. It's, this is the day. The thing, the variables that will change will be our other scheduled games on the sixteenth and seventeenth, if we can get those.
Um, my head.
Well, yeah, yeah, we, we have to work, because then they, other teams have to also look at their schedules and their wrestling and their availabilities at their gyms and.
So it's costing. We have placed Nashville.
I just kind of, well, yeah, I carry part work, like it's just in general too, you know, if it, if we have to bring it back to the board, the dates change.
Oh, okay. That is a good question. I wanted to answer that, by the way.
Yeah.
The future of it changes.
Yeah, the approval is to go out of state. And not necessarily the dates. And so there, there are, you know, anytime where we cross the state border outside of Washington. Um, the board needs to take action on that. So it isn't specific to, you can all go on September first or whatever.
Okay. Good to know.
Any other questions?
Oh. I make a motion then to approve the out of state travel. We already have it.
We've got first and a second hour discussions. So if there's no more discussion, all in favor of approving the out of state travel for the boys' basketball, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Judy. Thank you.
By the way, while we have you here, I just want to, yeah, in front of, I think you're doing a terrific job. And, uh, I know that you have a lot on your plate and that there was stuff left and then, and then there was. There was a scramble in the summer. I really, really appreciate your work. And I know that the kids, the kids can see that. So thank you.
All right, to back up for just a second, I heard everybody, but at least, I don't know, one of you covered the other one that Lisa, were you in favor?
Is it losing connection?
Is she still there?
I don't know. Don't work my computer, so hold on.
She looks like she might have dropped off.
She dropped off.
Uh, well, we'll proceed. So it's the.
First time doing this. I have another chair. We can have two hot.
Thank you.
I think, I think she was fine sitting over there.
Always.
Yeah. We're in this.
Talking to us about it.
Do you want that? Sure, okay. Um, first of all, we're, we're very, very excited about the prospect of moving from FBLA to DECA. We have been with FBLA since the beginning of time, since forever, which was great. Um, but as, as we have expanded in our program, it's, it's going to mean this just makes sense for us because. This new facility, just to give you an idea of how big you're getting within our business and marketing. Our student store is making money like it has never made before, like ever. Um, we've made in the last three weeks what we would almost make in a year at the old building. Yes. And so with that in mind, we're, we're getting a lot of student excitement and want to work in the store, they want to know what's going on in the store. How do I do this? How do I get involved with this? And we want to be responsible with the funds that are coming in. And DECA makes sense to us because we can go through their store, their school-based enterprise certification program. Where, where they will come into our store and help us and help the students run through this program to make it the best store it can be. And even offer perhaps merchandise rather than just, uh, slinging food at lunchtime. So, uh, which is surprisingly all that we're doing right now. And it just opens up so many more doors and opportunities for our students to get those, those experiences. And the real caveat was that they have curriculum that we can integrate into the classroom, which is business, marketing, financing. I mean, Doug, Callie and I, we all have, um, things that we can pick from. And I was, today is my first day using the curriculum in career choices. And I'm, I'm literally just blown away with what they have. They have a whole, uh, unit that I'm taking the kids through that's interactive. And at the end of it, we're going to be applying for a job at Target and just doing mock interviews, resumes, applications, which we would have done before in career choices, don't get me wrong. But they were more interested today, it's targeted and hey, Target's hiring right now anyway for the holidays. So we were able to, guys, when we get to help this, we might be able to actually have people get a job if you want one. It's just. It's just, and and the support at the organizational level is phenomenal, we've uh, we went to advisor training two, was it two? Two weeks ago already, and. We met advisors that are in the area, the advisor in Grandview, and he's one of the top um, top guys in DECA in the state, and. It just, everything that's available to us is is wonderful, and we just don't see how we can move, moving forward with with this with the kids.
Well, I'm from high school, my, we were talking to the school, Sunnyside. And it was my favorite class, actually, one stage in my restaurant. Um, you do the, you want to compete, no, I'm sure not some place, but the store, all that, it was, it was one of my favorite things. It was the main, one of the reasons I consider business, obviously, they end up in business, but um. But I love, and I I'm excited that that you guys are.
It's just, it is really exciting, and after COVID, we had such a hard time getting kids back into FBLA, and. Our last few meetings, I mean, it's almost standing there only in the meeting, and kids are just coming to see what it's about, and. And we already have kids sign up to go to our first event, it's to stay at TBC where they will have a mock competition. Where with FBLA, we didn't have that opportunity, it was, okay, here we go. We're going to the competition whether we know what we're doing or not, and so they'll get an idea of what to look forward to. Uh, when we do go to the the competition in December.
So how does it, so at the middle school, we have the middle school version of FBLA, what will happen with them?
No, we don't have, we have.
Is there a version of the tech, everything's going down?
Uh, if we start offering this. We have middle school and high school TSA.
Yeah, the competition thing is, but I think the similar to FFA, we have opportunities to compete. For show on either state or national status, where we. Um, students really love that opportunity. Um, you talked about Grandview, I remember being in, in these kids were dressing up in suits and were ready to go, and yeah. Talking about their projects and, you know, we wrote, we wrote this plan.
I would like that for what they said about the support system, because it's very similar to the Act Teachers Association. Um, it's very collegial, it's like, hey, how do you do this, I want to start doing this competition. And people help each other. And if you want to start a new course, hey, where's the frameworks, you'll get seventeen different frameworks. Where with FBLA, if you would ask, they would ask that question of the state's allocation, and it was critical to be in that response.
Yes, and the Richmond School District has a student state officer, and they've offered to bring her in to one of our club meetings and FCT two, just to know about her as well.
Jason, Lisa, any questions?
I think DECA is a great program, I know it's very competitive. Put on, you know, college um, school, applications and scholarships, I think it's great to change something that's been in place for thirty years, that takes a lot of guts. My question is, um, the current FBLA, FBLA officers. And what will happen with FBLA, will they be able to get a new position with DECA? Or, I mean, if you even have FBLA officers at this time.
All of our officers graduated last year, so we don't have a name.
Well, then there's no problem, it sounds great, great work giving this room.
Jason?
No, it sounds like a great opportunity, I I appreciate it coming forward, so.
Alright, guys. Do we have a motion to? Transition that you always. To approve that as a club. Alright, so you're.
I make a motion to approve DECA as the new career and technical student organization across our preschool.
Alright, do a second.
I'll say.
Alright, guys, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the next four. Um, so the next three are all essentially the same actions, we have to address them separately. And so I'll kind of explain all of them, and then however the board wants to handle that, you know, promotion, admission. Uh, the first one is the actual resolution to um. Authorize the issuance of individual procurement cards, so the board can say, yes, we're going to move forward with the P card program. Um, in what it is, the second one is the official application, so that would be a attached application, that's what holds the name. To the NMO financial group. Um, I had mentioned this in a, and. Sorry, I can't remember, like, when, what was our first reading, and which one was the first? So the first action, uh, the resolution is an action, and if that's approved today, then I'll be forward with. Um, submitting a second action, which is the application, and then I have the first reading of the our policy revisions. Um, from the charge card, so, and I had mentioned this in a previous meeting, that there are other vendors that we could go with, this is just the one that is. Supported by Wasso, and and it integrates with our financial system, they have great resources, and there being used in twenty-three different states. So, um, I just felt them uncomfortable with us joining this one, uh, but of course, if there was a situation, there are other um options out there. So I went ahead and put the um application in there, so you can see all that it entails. I did submit it to um our legal, just to make, you know, just so that they can have eyes on it, make sure nothing stands out. So I won't actually submit it until I get the offer from from them. Um, any questions on? The first two, the resolution of the application.
Are they gonna be this deployed?
If, so we are still gonna kind of hash that out, um, each area or department will have what their need is. So, um, the high school may decide they need five cards, or they might need four cards. And. We'll have cards specific to travel at the district office, so that anyone across the district who's never traveled can come to us and check one out. Um, like PTE would probably have a couple, the middle school, each of the schools will have one, A and B. Uh, would have their own, would work too, so we would have enough where it could be checked out, so it's gonna be like general, not by individual name. Unless there's a certain person that there should be, so we can go both directions. Um, but the idea is that they'll be maintained at the area or department level, and then they'll check them out, they'll do the reconciliation, and then it will be reviewed. Um, by my office, possibly me, uh, to make sure that they're following the guidelines, you know, procedures on a monthly basis. Uh, so the numbers will also shift. With this specific program, I can go in and change the credit limit on state, like instantly, essentially. So if we can have the the cards that are not being used often, but we have them, we can keep them at a reasonable credit limit, just so that it it protects us from risk perspective. And then I can increase it to just what they. And that can kind of go up and down, up to the maximum credit level of what a transaction will be allowed, you know, so we would be putting capital equipment on these. Um, and then we'll be working with the worker to the to um develop the manual, manual's gonna be very, very long, because it will stop all of the doubt. What, you know, who has a, who manages them, what happens if they, you know, well, um, what's allowed, so. So we're working on that in the background, um, so this will be, the policy is just the overall district-wide policy, but we'll have the manual on that.
So will we keep our, I guess you're putting part of the reason we need those.
So as soon as I get these up and running, within about thirty days, I will have it. Yeah, so probably, I would say maybe twenty to thirty cards. Off the top of my head, but again, it's gonna kind of vary, and we can kind of do it pretty quickly. As long as we go with electronic statements, it will cost us extra to get more cards or less cards. It is three dollars per statement if we want to be for statements, so I decided to go with electronic.
So we could start with a smaller number, we could add if we chose to. Just that's a management piece and booking side, and department test.
Yeah, we do want to work out the key verse, we're not gonna just issue everyone a card right away, we'll start definitely.
Just as a kind of a saying, so when she's talking about how manual is, starting out all these internal controls. Within the organization, and even appropriated use of the book, and so all the processes and procedures. Of our expectations will be spelled out in this manual, so. It's important, it is a heavy load, um, so I'm I'm happy with it, um, just glad that. Amy has decided, you know, like, this is a priority for, we can get it passed, and um, yeah, I know it's a lot of work, but. I think it will be, it'll create efficiencies that weren't uh always there.
Right, and this is something you're very comfortable with using.
Yes, yeah, all of my previous jobs I've had, I've always used for at least audit it, so I have a lot of experience with that. Uh, it is gonna be a culture shift, so there's gonna be training, you know, before someone's issued a card, they're gonna have to go through training. Um, we'll have to work with, you know, with all of the buildings and tell them they're comfortable with it, but it really will stream on it, once everyone's kind of used to it. Um, we'll have to actually watch things a little bit closer to make sure there's this product view for you. Um, but there's a lot less paperwork and time, like that we're spending right now with requisition videos. So it will be less man hours, um, in the end.
And building, building principals will have more control over their building budgets and such.
So we need to approve the resolution.
The resolution first.
The application, that's, we don't do anything with that, correct? We just have to say do it. So we have to approve it too. And then that's when she will be approved, this first reading is. Our.
Just that, yeah, the other one after that is final, I think I need to get through the.
I think it's all rolling, we need to do the rest.
Now, first off, uh, Lisa or Jason, do you want to be having questions or on it?
I I do, on the resolution. Amy, twice, it's it refers to the municipality, should that be school district and not municipality?
To be honest, I wasn't sure, um, I used an example directly from um. The Illinois Vino group, the MO group, I did send it to our legal team to see if they had changes. Uh, so that might be something that's changed from them.
I would think it would be district, that maybe somebody knows something, I don't know, that would be my only, my only question, and then I. I think I shared this with you before, but the um, on your. Cover sheet, the anticipated timeline, I think that is such an outstanding tool, you know, first reading, second reading. And the forecast of how it's gonna proceed, and if we could. Include that every time we're trying to move something through to keep track of it, I think that would be a great tool for the board in the district.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate that feedback.
So the wording of the municipality versus district that came back from.
No, it hasn't. So if the board approves um the resolution of what it is, then once it comes back from legal, we'll give the picture on it.
Usually municipality is a reference to cities, um, but you can, you can approve it with, you know, say you approve it with.
The word is.
With recommendations from legal counsel. But since the resolution on the zero.
However, I don't want legal coming back with a whole bunch of extra stuff, other than just changing.
Perfect, yeah.
When the board feel comfortable approving it, if the only change is district, and then if not, I can bring it back to. Um, the NMO.
Yeah, that's where I would go with it. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, if that's the case.
I have a question, what would it do to the timeline if we waited for full legal review?
If we get it back in time to get it to, so if we get it back and there are changes, I wouldn't bring it, I wouldn't be able to bring it back to the board until the twelve. Uh, unless. Everyone was open to, you know, a meeting before then, just to push it through, I cannot submit the P card application without the resolution. So it just, I I hate to say I don't know, it's gonna just depend on when it comes back from legal, um, I did submit it a few days ago, so I'm hoping it will come back. Soon, um, but it could push up probably in a month, it would push up into December.
And there's a, there's a cutoff date, is that, is that what I understood?
No, there's no cutoff date, it's rolling, so whenever we get it, it will just take um, um approximately a month. Once I submit the application, they do have to review it, they go through three years of um audit. Um, before they approve for us to join the paper program, and then they'll have to integrate their system into ours. I mean, it's, they've already done it, but they have to get us up and running with it, and so that could be in a couple weeks, so that's why I estimated about a month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we, um. The three of us, okay, Lisa, are you okay with approving it with the? The uh, the two. Words municipalities changed to district? Let me just wait for it to come back and show.
Lose her again.
Here, I'll put she back. Well. Let's go ahead and and uh.
Well, Lisa, is there?
She's in.
She must, for some reason, she can't.
I don't have anything.
I'm not sure what the.
She goes through a tunnel in law service. That was the first one. Maybe she went another tunnel.
Yeah.
But how about Jason?
Jason, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, um, I'm. I'm slightly hesitant to. Oh, is Lisa here?
Oh, she, she posted, she she texted in, and she lost sound, she would recommend changing municipality across the school district, she would be okay.
Okay.
So are you that okay if that we we do the the approval with with that wording?
Yeah.
I am, I just am a little concerned if it comes back with some major changes. Um, or recommendations from. From our um, our attorney, but. Yeah, I'm right, I'm ready, let's go for it.
Alright, so. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twelve dash twenty-two. Um, authorizing insurance of individual procurement cards.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twelve dash twenty-two, authorizing issuance of individual procurement cards. With with.
Recommendation to change.
Yeah, with with recommendation to change.
Municipality across the school district.
Right. I would second that.
Okay, so we have first, second, we have the recommendation to change the word municipality, I think it was twice, across the school district. All of it, oh, we gotta do a roll call, um, Jason.
Aye.
Alisa. Yeah, you can text again if you have to, or even if it comes up.
I lost my sound for a little bit of the discussion, I apologize.
There you are.
Yes, you're back.
Sorry, very sorry, my, I I don't know, where are we at, is there a motion in a second, are we still discussing?
We're actually doing the roll call vote at the moment.
Any changes to the resolution?
Yes, it was changing the word municipality to across the school district as you suggested.
They, oh, my, my vote is yes.
Peggy?
Yes, yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
I am a yes. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. So then we have to approve the application as well, correct, that however is not a roll call, that's just a overall approval. So I would entertain, entertain a motion to approve the implementation app, app with this. Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have to. Okay, and then we have to. Six, policy sixty-two twelve has to be done as a first reading, correct?
Correct, so this will be the first reading, uh, the policy is currently labeled as charge card. And so you'll see on the, um, the actual document, I changed it to purchasing cards. Um, just to match more with the, with the new key card. And so I did change quite a bit of the language, I'll be, quite a bit of the language. And I changed the, the timing for the billing, the previous one was thirty days. I'd rather not, I, I decreased that to fifteen days, so that will have time at the instant office to actually look. For anything that might need to be addressed within a reasonable timeframe. And I also took out, um, some of the language about like the. Because that will be managed at the district level now. Um, and then I changed some of the, I just changed some of the language to match the program, and I use, you know, other districts examples. So that we're more aligned with them as well.
You guys any, uh, questions or concerns on the policy?
I have none, thank you.
Been hearing then, uh, I would like, uh, motion to approve policy sixty-two twelve's first readings.
So moved.
Second.
All right, last but not least, uh, minimum fund balance, this was. Uh, we've talked about this on again, off again for like a month, month and a half. Amy and I talked a little bit about this, um, beginning of the week, I guess it was, wanna go over it?
And so the changes from the previous, this is the official first reading of the fund balance, um, policy. Uh, we do not have any good thing on the place, so this is the, the, an initial one for us. I changed the version from last, from the draft conversation, um, by adding the different types of funds. So there's the restricted fund balance, the designated fund balance, the unrestricted and undesigned fund balance. And so if you, you know, read through those, it kind of tells you exactly what that refers to. And then so when we're, if, if the board, um, passes the policy, the minimum fund balance percentage. Is only applicable to the non, you know, designated fund. So, um, it's really just, it, it's the fallback, so we'll really have about eight to ten percent, but that includes the grant funding. And some of those other things that we designate, and so I think it is a really good percentage, um, but I do have it spelled out, and then, um. We were talking about the, so right now, we're currently in a financial emergency that's still, you know, in place. So with this policy, if it drops below the three percent, it kind of automatically sets us into a financial emergency. And then it would be the board's responsibility with the superintendent to address that right away. So that means we're getting too low, and to get it back up to that minimum amount. So we did add that language in there, that was not, and that was not previously discussed, so if there are any questions about that, or, um, you know, any advice on that.
Well, I know that was, yeah, that was absolutely something I wanted in, and the flip side of that is, once we get back above. Well, the trigger, which would be three percent, it, it sunsets the emergency. Too, so it forces us to do what we gotta do to get it back up to our, what we decided was our minimum. And it also puts a, a high watermark, which means we can't rattle, that's familiar, it has to be used accordingly. Uh, Jason, Lisa, do you guys have any questions on?
I do, um, my, I, in my notes, I thought we were gonna go with the five percent with the four to six. Did I? Am I notes wrong?
Oh, no, they're not.
That was my mistake, I had my notes wrong then, my apologies.
It's first reading, so we can adjust it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that was, I, I, you're right, I forgot all about that. I was so busy worrying about the, the last two sentences.
So we want a minimum fund out of, what, five percent with the range from forty.
He's right, I was excited, he did mine looks out, so they're rarely eligible, so.
I did have a question about what you said, Andy, sunsetting our current financial emergency, we still have to bring that back for a vote.
Well, if we had talked, this is the policy, it says that once we're above such, such fund balance. I think, is that not?
But if, you know, if we had, if the board. And, and actually, I'm going in, maybe they still have to, you know, go back, but then in the future, it would be automatic. It would be an automatic process.
Well, I, I, at least I would agree with you, then, when, when we get to final reading. And adoption of this policy, uh, if that's the way it has to be, then we need to follow this immediately with the. A resolution or a cancellation or whatever the call to end.
I think we should do that first, we need to bring back the financial emergency. Vote to end it, and then approve, and it can be at the same meeting. But I think procedurally, at the end that financial emergency, have the new policy, and I think that's good language to include that. That if we're below the five percent, with the four to six percent range, then, you know, then we are entering a financial emergency, and it needs to be addressed. I think that was good to add that.
So if we do this, right, we do. Bring that back to end it, and do the second reading in the same night, and then the following meeting would be the adoption, correct? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, so as long as we have that one first, and, um. Yeah, well, that's fine, we can absolutely do that.
The other option would be to table it, and then. Do that first, take the first step, and then put this back on the agenda. For, for the first and second reading, or you can extend it, you know, directly to the second reading, but, um, however the board wants to do it. I do outline it, as long as the order is correct, there's not a big deal.
Well, I would move to approve first reading of policy sixty-twenty-two fund balance with changing the minimum fund balance from. Of five percent with a range of four to six.
And adding this, and adding the financial emergency trigger language.
Well, it's already in there, but we'll have to end the one, I would just sort of assuming that it. We'll, we'll end what we have going. This will have its own. Its own language in it, so it's. Uh, all right, guys, we have a first and a second, all in favor, please say aye. All right, so that's our work, now we're into reports.
So I have three things, um, one, we are working really diligently on implementing our new K five P L A program. We are individually accepting every single K five reader. Um, to understand their reading ability, and what their challenges are, and what their, um, strengths are. And then, as, as, and that will support also our dyslexia, uh, assessment, we have actually changed our dyslexia assessment, along with last year. We really have a lot of issues with the customer support, um, and so we are using our i-ready assessment this year. With some add, we have to add a cold read and, um, and, and around, which, uh, uh, where kids have to make things quickly. It helps to identify skill deficits. And so, um, it's working really well, and our buildings are all working, we're actually meeting on Friday with the principals. And our reading interventionists and our coaches, we meet every other Friday anyway, with coaches and principal, I do the elementary. And, um, there, we're adding interventionist because everybody's gonna be on the same page, and everybody's gonna do things within way. So we can be consistent, so that's working really well, and then I have two fantastic pieces of news. Um, I applied for some competitive grants, we, I found out last week, we got the ninety-two thousand dollars for the transitional kindergarten grant. To implement transitional kindergarten, be working with E S C one, two, three, and a team of folks from our, our district. Which will probably, which one would be cap and our developmental preschool, and they're really, we're really working to have those programs work together. And see where students should be in our transitional K class, so that's to come, and the class would have to start by January, so we'll be working diligently on that. And then I just found out last night, when I was at Elsberg, that, but I all, we also, we see the twenty-five thousand dollar freshman success rate. So I'm really excited about that too, and, uh, talk to, um, Brian, Brian's, I think from L, so he's not here today, but. We, um, will have a, a team, I talked to Rick tonight, and to really be part of that team, and to really to help support those freshmen, getting them off on the right foot. Really having a, a team that looks at kids who might be struggling, what kind of supports they need. And it's, we've got to reduce and eliminate our freshman failure rate, so that students are on track to graduate, if that freshman year is so key. So, um, I'm very excited about both of those.
On kindergarten, is it limited to, is it all, or limited to certain?
It's, so it's transitional kindergarten, which is kind of like pre-teen, it's those kids that, um, are, there's a, a age rule, so they have to meet the age rules. And we would have, they would register, we'd have a process, just like we do when kids rush to their school. And so we have kids that are probably not in any preschool program. We have kids in our developmental preschool that we know might be going to kindergarten, that we can transition into that as well for the last six months. And then we have kids potentially de-cap, that might be, would be best for them to transition to that, and then de-cap can take some other students that might be on the waiting list. So it's gonna be a team effort, and it will be some brand new kids that maybe aren't in programs. And it's really helping them get those kindergarten reading skills, those gold skills that they have to have to. Ready for, ready for kindergarten, um, school success field, like. Learning how to go get your lunch, and get in line, and sit down, and listen to instructions, and so, um, we, you know, we've. Uh, we've had to hold off on any of this, because we never had space, we've never had space, and we actually have space.
So that was gonna be my next question, are we just gonna increase at different buildings?
You know, we, we're gonna start every review, one, one, probably one class, this depend, I think, maybe on. The demand, but, um, I think we should start with one, and start, start there. Um, and Johnson already has a room, um, the grant covers buying this, uh, the supplies in the classroom setup, you know, startup cases. As well as the planning and the training, and we would have to hire a teacher, and then they, once we have them, they're just like any other student, they're just, they're, they're an F team. So we have the funding to get it started, and then we get regular funding to help pay, it's a multi-year. So it's, it's the kids coming in that will be kindergartners, but this is to start us, so once we get started, we'll be able to do it every year. No. So it'll be work, you know, because we'll have bus, bus being, all sorts of things to work out, and I know, I don't know if I'm even on here, but. It's, it's coming, I mean, it's on the day, don't worry, we'll figure it out, no, yeah, I'm, I was really happy, I'm saying it that, because these are programs that will help our kids. All of our kids and families.
Jason, Lisa, any questions?
I do have one other question on that, will that limit? Will that put any limits on, um. Other, I mean, will it put limits on families that maybe have a, a, a four-year-old that's. Could use that little extra nudge, uh, from, from their parents wanting them to be in that program, so they get. That extra, extra year of, of.
So it will, it will depend on what age of a four-year-old they are, so why? Because it, it, there are specific age restrictions that the kids have to hold, because they have to be eligible for kindergarten next year.
Right.
Um, and then I think that, you know, we will, if we have a big demand, we will probably have to make some need-based decisions, um, for students. And if the students are already being served in another program, we have a lot of students that aren't getting any service, I think that's another consideration. So we're, we're partnering with the E S D, they're gonna help guide us through this, we were actually required to partner with the E S D. And then that also gives us kind of the access to districts that are, and that are also, that are already implementing, or maybe also starting to implement a new K program, so.
And help those kids that maybe aren't quite gonna be ready, but this will help them get to that.
The fact that we, what we've done to our schools, what we're, we, we actually can take them, and we've never been able to. We can have, the last, I wanted to do this the last four years, and we have to not do it, and that brings.
Good to hear. And just next, business manager.
Um, so in the board packet, there was, um, the enrollment document, um, that's been provided in the past, that was updated with September enrollment. Uh, so although the number is still, you know, you can tell it's still declining from previous years, it's over projected for this year. So we had expected a decline, um, but it wasn't as big of a decline as we had originally anticipated, so that's good. The bigger scrap that it stays steady, or, you know, that we don't lose kids, um, and, you know. It means that the conversations are working, hopefully with getting this either day school or coming to school and not go elsewhere. And so I would highly encourage anybody to keep that, those conversations going, and to try to get the kids back in school that are in district, because that's gonna be the best. So, um, any questions on the file that was provided? So the other updates I have, um, I just wanted to let the board know, I'm gonna be touring with. Uh, the different directors in my area, so food service, transportation, maintenance, security. And over the next couple of months, so if anyone wants to join, if you have, you have joined, just to see how we operate behind scenes. And that, and thank you to all the directors who are willing to take me around, and just that it can kind of be that, and work, and look for any kind of efficiency. Um, project identification, so what's starting to break, what, what do we need to have for our long-term planning? And so that we can bring that back to board, so as we're talking about fund balance, we know. How long do we expect to be checked, that, you know, if it's gonna work, or when do we need to buy new cars, or, you know, different things like that, with service. And just kind of knowing what we need to do and when, and so that's gonna happen over the next couple of months, otherwise, I probably won't bring it back to the board. And I just wanna let you guys know that that is what we're working on, um.
Uh, Ms. Jones, oh, wait, 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 wait.
Okay, I just had a couple of quick things, I got to do a tour of the high school town, even though it's been a while, and I took John's classmates. Um, we had a, um, move that, it was celebrated, it was seventy-fifth birthday. There were people that had never seen the high school, and, and once again, people were impressed when they see it, and that was fun. Um, at my, my tribe meeting, we're still looking for a new director, that you have some potential candidates. Uh, and working in some second mini-vues, and got to attend my Saturday football game. And I was kind of surprised, I thought the stadium would be packed, but then I got to thinking, okay, probably not as many people from out of town. As when we play a team here in the valley. But other than being a very lopsided score, the weather was beautiful and brilliant by all.
I love, lots of families that would, you know, maybe at the ball, had their kids probably great kids and soccer games.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I thought that place would just be packed, and it wasn't. Uh, Matt was popular, saw him there, I couldn't even get away from him, so many people wanted to visit him.
He's like a rock star, I know.
I'm surprised I don't have anything this, this time.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
She just said she's out of internet service, and she had to leave the meeting.
And I really didn't have much, uh. Got to sit down with Danny earlier this week, and I worked on the fund balance, uh, paper a little bit. Got texted from Matt, a whole bunch Saturday, keeping me up on the game.
Yeah, yeah.
I was in Idaho, and couldn't have been there if I wanted to, so I, I appreciate that. That's really about all I got, other than driving by Witskan and seeing the trustes go up, I, I go by a couple of times a week, it's.
I, I'd like to go along. I, I mean, I haven't, everything out there, but I have not even toured it, I don't think that it's safe yet. Um, I, I will let, uh, Dan and Les know that when, when they feel like it's safe. I mean, we all want to, or the snow flies, if we could take a little longer, that was exciting.
Yeah.
But maybe look forward, it's really cold, or really messy, but yeah, I, yeah, it's amazing to me, the amount of dirt they pulled out of that. Foundation area, I would say.
When they dumped it, they just down the road, it soaked that all the debris. Yeah, and with those portals gone.
Yeah, yeah, it's been very, it's very nice.
Yeah, we drive about one time and the water would be gone and then. Next time the walls were up and the next time the whole, everything was just shut, no windows, no, just nothing.
Oh, that really was stripped down to nothing inside of, yeah.
We'll see. Well, that's really all I've got. Um, so that brings us to. Matt?
Okay, so I have a number of different issues. Um, I just wanna give a couple shout-outs. N H I, N H S breakfast, National Honor Society does breakfast. Kim Boyd oversaw that excellent job as able to have a waffle there. Um, our band went to Levelworth, they shared that email with the board. And again, Dan Norris, just an excellent job. Um, in our football team, uh. You know, kudos to all the football coaches. Our kids look great out there. Uh, second piece is I sent dates onto the board about our migrant pack meeting. Um, so December ninth, February twenty-fourth, April twenty-eighth, and then June second. Uh, those are really fun events. Uh, they, our parents really like to see. Um, our leadership, if they can be out, and usually the food's pretty good too. So, um. Yeah, the, uh, if you can make it, those dates are really great. I asked Principal Bailey to identify some student board rep candidates. And so, uh, I spoke for the last week. He had identified a couple that might be potential candidates, and so. Uh, once we get those names, we can move forward with, uh, some interviews and include those students, um, a little bit later in the year. October sixth, uh, is, we'll be doing a. Uh, was that this, was it the sixth, was it?
Our?
Yeah, fourth, sorry, like you had chat.
Yeah, thank you.
So October four, um. Uh, the middle school will be doing a kind of a student behavior night, and so we'll be asking parents to come in. And we'll be talking about some of those behaviors that our students are engaging in, that are leading to other behaviors that. Um, are not okay. So, uh. I think we're still working on a timeline.
Uh, we're working on that. I'm looking at six thirty is probably the.
Yeah, so what we're finding is that students are, um, just have. Uh, unrestricted access to a lot of these applications on their own. And as a result of that, there's conflict at school, so. We're gonna be talking about, um, fights, uh, kind of expectations with technology. And then just some other events. I know that Jody has worked with the I C O P D. They have some social media nights and, uh, just different, different things that we'll be having to train curbs in those years. Uh, so October four. Uh, Boys and Girls Club, um, I'm still working on their contract with Foster Garvey. And Jim McNeil, Lee Machio, um, that's a process. Uh, we've submitted documents to them. Um, and, uh, it's kind of a back and forth process that we'll see time, just ask for different documents, so. We're continuing to have that contract, uh, developed for us, so we can bring that back to the board. Um, I was hoping to have a draft of it, uh, for tonight. So now I'm hoping to have a draft, uh, by the end of September here that I keep it on, so I'll be looping back with them tomorrow. Uh, and then my last piece, and I saved it, you know, saved it for the last, so we can have some discussion. I've been able to speak with Jason and Andy, uh, kind of about this developing a strategic, strategic plan and strategic plan process. And. Uh, there, there's been some reservation. Um, about the, the finances involved with hiring somebody to develop a strategic plan. Um, in addition to that, uh, you know, there. Oftentimes with consultancies, uh, there are some, there is a, a process. And sometimes that process just leads to, I guess, some, the concern was is that there could be some bias involved. Um, so, uh, the decision, and this is kind of a board decision or discussion as well. Is that, um, you know, was, it was suggested that we try and develop a strategic plan, uh, internal. And really work with our leaders. Um, and when I say leaders, I mean teacher leaders, I mean building leaders. Uh, our coaches, curriculum leaders. Um, and at the central office as well as our board and. Community stakeholders and parents to try and develop what's best for our kids and what a strategic plan would look like in foster. So, uh, the idea, you know, Deanna, I know Deanna went to some compression planning trainings. Um, a few years ago, she does have that still set. Um, we do have a pretty clearly articulated mission and vision. Um, and so, you know, that, that process would kind of look unique to us. Uh, but we would work to, uh, use different sources of data to try and identify need and work really closely with the board. Um, to develop a plan that is relevant, meaningful for us and our direction for the future. Questions, comments on that?
We need to move forward, we need to get something going.
Yeah, so one of, one of, yeah, one of the directorators, um. Suggested, suggestions was that we develop some committees, and so this could be like an ad hoc committee. That is established for a special purpose and then can be collapsed. Or even some of these committees, we may wanna continue to have scheduled and, uh, turn them into like district work groups. So, uh, it's up, uh, you know, the great thing about doing it this way is, is it, it is up to us to define and create. And so, um, we can do some of those things that are creative and, you know, maybe we leave them place. Uh, for, for a long time, you know, it serves a purpose for the districts.
I'm thinking if we're gonna do this on our own, we need to start with like a half-day, maybe a Saturday meeting. Where everybody's sitting at this table, kind of comes up with a plan, it's, I'm not even. I'm gonna be painfully honest, I'm not even entirely sure how to go about it. And then from there, maybe do some committees and then, you know, talk to different teachers, admin.
Yeah, well, since. It sounds like maybe I'll be in charge of this. And I think Matt talked to me and my, my only comment was, it's a little bit like a doctor diagnosing themselves. Um, or a therapist trying to give themselves therapy. So that, that worries me a little bit. I'm not, I, I will do, of course, whatever you ask me to do. Well, to the point, but. Uh, it will, it, it, it really is going to be a structured process that we would structure and bring, um, people in and, and. It would be something that I would need to work on the structure of it. Um, for some time before we come together, because you really want to have a good representation of. Of your district. And then the compression front planning process would bring us to what's important to it. When I looked at the examples that Matt brought last time, I will example, there was one example. When I looked at that example, it had some beautiful verbiage in it, but to me, it didn't really look like a plan. It looked more philosophical than something to execute. Um, I think the, the. Having just the, the board get input on what we would talk about is probably might not be the best approach, because. The idea is that you want to get input from the groups, and then the board, it would be a part of those groups, and you would bring in community people, you'd bring in parents, teachers. Teacher leaders, you know, parent educators, people from the different bargaining groups. And we would have a more homogeneous process, but there is a, a way to do it to really try to. Use your time effectively to get to what's important. The one thing that you could potentially do ahead of time. Around what you would focus on would be to talk about the big topics. Like one of the big areas we wanna focus on is, um, ob- obviously, instruction should be one of those. Um, one of those might be, um, you know, college and career. Career for students, what kind of things are important for us, for students to walk out of foster high school with, when it comes to their plans for their college career. So there is some of those things that could be done, but we would wa, what, what would be important is that we. We start to look, think about who we would be inviting. We started, and, and I, I will work on the structure, there's a specific structure we would follow. I would have to have some leaders, um, that would help lead groups. We would not have everybody work on everything. We would have groups would maybe come together like on, we'd spend like a Saturday, it might take two Saturdays, but I think we could come to a place where we would have. A working document of what's important. And ultimately, we would be looking at something that would be, needs to be, uh, like a three to five-year plan. It's not a one-year deal and. And because it is, it is a, it's a big job. I've never done it before, obviously. Um, the last time we did it, I was a building principal, and like I said, I think my son was eleven years old, he's twenty-three. So, I, I need time to work on that to really work, I, I would, in my mind. We would maybe have our first Saturday in December, maybe. That's not the best idea because of the holidays, maybe early January. So I don't want to rush because we feel like we're need to get, you know, need to have this to be a day, because we wanna do a good job and we wanna have the right people there. The last time we did it, we had about a hundred and twenty people that participated in the process, and that was from all walks. I don't know if we will go that big. Um, but it's, we're talking about significant work for my office, I will, and I know that we aren't putting in contract time. But I would probably need to be there extra time and bring, because if we're contacting people, inviting them to participate, we wanna do that with a personal phone call. Not emails and things like that. So I need a little time to wrap my head around it. And then I would, um, wanna talk about that and possibly, you know, the timeline, what we would do, what that structure would look like. Because we wanna come up with a plan that represents. Everybody, represents, and you know, having high school students, even middle school students on that, um. That might be part of that as well. It would be really important, so. The big areas that we might focus on, maybe I would say the board might work on, but I, I need to, I would advise against. Us coming up with ideas that we then present. The ideas need to come from the group, and I think we're gonna get good. We will come to good ideas with that input.
So we'll talk a little bit about, so what the process looks like. Or typically what they look like, is you start off with, we talk a lot in education about data versus decision-making. And so that process really starts out with kind of a self-study and looking at data and multiple data sources. And so what you're trying to do is triangulate, what are different needs within a district. And so you're doing kind of a layered analysis. Um, that can be focus group interviews, that can be surveys, that can be, um, student, you know, large pictures of student grades. And, uh, assessment outcomes. And so you're looking at that, you're also looking at. Um, diversity, I'll call it subgroups. Um, so where is the school performing well, where's the school struggling, or the district itself struggling at? And so once you do that, and you kind of do a layered analysis, then you start to really, um, identify some priorities. Right? And so you wanna hear from stakeholders, you do kind of, is the, and it's a stakeholder analysis with it. Who are the important voices? Obviously, we're gonna want student voice in that's. Right? We're gonna want parent voice in this. We're gonna want some community voice. We absolutely are gonna want teacher voice. And so we can start to look at those, you know, look at those priorities, look at those areas that we're falling short in. And even, they call it a slot analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Instead of threats, you know, and do, um. Challenges maybe, um, but you can kind of go through these different analytical lenses. Um, to define your priorities. And then though, you know, once you do that, then you start as an organization. Looking at research, right? So how we address these, uh, priorities. Now that's, that really, when I talk about this, it's really specific to. Um, I'm talking about learning outcomes. Now, in the past, we've also, and I know that I've talked with Jason and Andy about this. Looking at different components or either having a facilities arm of this planning. Um, and maybe like a safety and security, and so I'm looking holistically at the system. Um, typically, when, when districts develop these, it is really centered around the sole purpose, and it is. You know, kind of our focus to perform more academically and do, you know, prepare our kids for college work and life. Um, but we've talked about including different sections, and that's when Jason was talking about committees. As Deanna said, this is big work and it's time-consuming work. Um, the board, you know, in part of this discussion, the board's really gonna need to be, um, committed on this. Because it'll take some, you know, like, part of this process is to really unify. The focus of the district and for the board members to assist in saying this is a priority, these outcomes are a priority for us. So it, it's a heavy lift, um, I do believe it's needed. Uh, we do have the skill sets within, um, the organization, but as Deanna said, it may be, it may take more time. For, you know, for committees, for some of that work. Our office is gonna do some heavy lifting, of course, I'll be involved in some, you know, the lifting. Um, there will be meetings and we want you to be involved in some of the lifting. Um, and, and even as Deanna said, putting about a plan that at the end of the day. People feel like they're invested in it, they have a voice, and that they're ready to take action on. Um, and then, you know, that, that is the big, you know, the fact here, that we can really unite people and mobilize them towards a common focus and outcome.
And you potentially could flow me, that would be great too.
Jason?
I'm, I'm on, um, no, I think this is a, an opportunity for us. I do think, and I, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's not wise to revisit our, you know, our, uh, vision statement. Or mission and vision statement. And maybe, you know, read that, I don't know when that was last done. Um, but it might be an opportunity to revisit that and then, uh, start developing goals, but, um, I mean. We've been kind of talking about it for, for a while, it'd be nice just to start putting it in action, whether it's a retreat. Um, a board retreat in the next year, couple, three weeks, next month, and, uh, start, start getting this. Getting this ball rolling, so.
Let us kind of count in, in modeling what, um, AV had produced. Let Deanna and I meet and start to construct some timelines. And, um, just some, allow us to frame the work, we'll bring that back to the board about what that looks like. Um, and how many, how many stakeholders we're gonna seek to evolve in this process. And then once, once we're able to kind of wrap our minds around what this looks like, um, we'll bring that back. And it may even kind of start to present some of those ideas and timelines and things like that. So that the board's involved in that, um, and then after we were able to do that, then that'll be, we'll start setting meetings and be going after work.
Sounds like a good call.
Alright guys, well then, while we're looking at doing that, we'll set something up. We got just timelines, we'll.
Do timelines and have that at the next board meeting.
And it doesn't have to be lightning fast, it just has to be moving.
Yeah.
Alright, well with that. All we have left was our next future meeting, which is our next regular meeting on October twelfth, six o'clock right here. And then, anything, Jason, or Lisa's not on. Jason, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright guys, thank you Jason. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.